All right, this is the planning board meeting for November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We're gonna stand and say the pledge.
But.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna do a roll call. Um, Kim Smith and Jared Buckner are both, uh, excused, and Tony DeSantis is excused also. Hey, Katrina Zambrano.
Here.
Mona Abdullah.
Here.
Debbie Friend.
Here.
Debbie Cable.
Here.
I'll hand it over to the vice chair.
Okay. It's my first time doing this. I think the first order of business is looking for, um, the minutes of last meeting.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes of last meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Any questions? Okay. Uh, motion to accept.
Please, friend motion. Okay, so, oh, go ahead. The cable second.
Hey. All favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carried.
Just trying to just so that I could, uh, say all in favor, all opposed, just.
I didn't hear you.
All in favor, all opposed.
All opposed.
Just make sure.
Any opposed?
Any opposed, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. All right, so no opposed, so we can move on.
You can move on.
Thank you. Okay, so first order of business on the agenda, took that where we're at.
Yep, so, uh, just breathe, I'll, I'll read away.
Okay.
So, so I'm, I'm making the first agenda item. I'm Chuck Clark from the Department of Development. Before I get into my presentation, uh, real quick, uh, we are in council chambers. The nameplates in front of us are not the names of the people who are here. Uh, this is Ariana Kryakowski from the Law Department. I'm Chuck Clark, Steve Baylen, and Scott, I'm sorry, Scott Hayes and Steve Baylen from Code Enforcement. Uh, we'll identify ourselves as we talk. Uh, the, uh, item in front of you, planning board, um, relates to, um, an application that we have been requested to participate in, uh, by Erie County and the Erie County Department of Planning, and it involves an application to a, a relatively new housing program run by Housing and, and, uh, Homes and Community Development, um, and it's called Move In New York. And Governor Hokel's twenty-five, twenty-six budget, there's five, uh, fifty million dollars, excuse me, uh, set aside to support affordable homes under the Move In New York program to communities that service mostly a, a low to mod in pop, low to mod population, or that have a high percentage of low to mod population, of which Lackawanna does. The state through the Homes and Community Renewal Agency is going to distribute that fifty million to up to fifteen municipalities, land banks, or nonprofit developers, and it doesn't mean fifteen of each, it means a total of fifteen, and that's gonna be a statewide competition for these funds. The application window opened on the fifteenth of this month, and it's going to continue on a rolling basis until January thirtieth of next year. And, and what the Move In, I'm sorry, what the Move In New York program is, is a, a new type of design. It's very similar to what you recently saw with Habitat for Humanity, where they were building a modular style design on Center Street. Uh, the cross, the, uh, Move In New York program, uh, utilizes something of crossover modern home technology. They refer to it as cross-mod for short, and it's a combination of, of manufactured home construction, modular home construction, uh, that have the safety standards, uh, uh, through New York State, uh, that have an extensive, uh, vetting process through an RFP. They also have the approval of government agencies, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, for traditional financing. So these, uh, uh, in essence are, uh, traditional homes from the first purposes of building and financing. They can range anywhere from a thousand to eighteen hundred square feet. The average is about fourteen hundred. Three bedroom, one bath, uh, porch should either outdoor set or design, or garage design. Uh, they come with no full basements. They're either built on a solid foundation or a, uh, crawl space foundation, and those would be decisions that would be made based on, on the lot and, and the applicant. With those safety criteria in mind at the state level, um, all local codes and, and, uh, laws are, are applicable, so just like any other construction, uh, if it were to move forward, the Code Enforcement folks would, uh, would manage that process of, of ensuring compliance of the site plan. So continuing on under program highlights, um, these are, the, the, the focus of these homes is that they're built faster and more efficiently than a stick-built home. Uh, they, the state did a test home in Syracuse, and they can get these up and running and functional in six months. Uh, so not only is speed important, uh, but, uh, these are taxable homes. These are not nonprofit homes. Uh, they are giving, uh, uh, the, the state through the, the five, uh, fif- fifty million, excuse me, are giving seventy-five thousand dollars subsidies to qualified, uh, borrowers. So if you see, and then I forgive me, I made a, a typo error in the one page, the, the maximum construction land cost, uh, is, for this program is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Applying the program subsidy of seventy-five thousand dollars, an individual would need to qualify for a traditional mortgage of one-seventy-five. Um, low to mod income, uh, for this program is defined as seventy to a hundred and thirty percent of the average median income. Okay, so what we're being asked to do is apply to this program. And in order to apply to this program, we need a couple of steps. Before you, before you was the zoning board, each one of the ten lots that we've identified for this program have some type of minor variance associated with them, very similar to the Habitat for Humanity homes, where it's either, uh, the frontage, side, rear, what have you. They approve contingent variances in concept on the ten lots that we've chosen. If we are selected for this program, then site plans would come back, and they would have an opportunity to, uh, further vet and, and, and validate those, those, uh, variances. If you see under the exterior example, this, these three pictures that are provided to you, uh, these are, uh, remnants of the test home that was done in Syracuse. So you can see, you know, very, uh, neatly built, uh, driveways, walkways, landscape, uh, solid foundations, you know, traditional entranceways, porches, um, you know, very well built. Again, if you, if you've taken time to look at any of the Habitat for Humanity homes that built on Center Street and the ones that are starting to be built in the first ward on Ingham and others, um, they, they follow a very similar pattern. Uh, again, though, the only difference here, well, there's a couple of differences, you know, one is the cross-mod technology, which uses more, uh, modular home construction, and, and secondly, it's a different funding source. So Habitat homes come from CDBG funding, uh, this, this funding would come from, um, New York State Homes of Community Renewal. Uh, the next page about eligibility, I've covered most of this, um. Lackawanna plans to apply to this program, uh, under the guidance of Erie County Department of, uh, Environment and Planning, and the application will be submitted by the Lackawanna Housing Development Corporation on our behalf. The reason that is happening is because these funds, um, typically flow through, it's called the Community Development Corporation, of which the LHDC has that designation. The city itself does not. So again, but I am gonna reinforce every time people hear the acronym LHDC, they think nonprofit. This is, these are not nonprofit homes. These are, uh, for-profit homes. The role of the LHDC is to submit the application to help us with the marketing of this program and to help us with construction of this program. But this is not a LHDC managed property. It will be sold to a qualified individual who meets the seventy to one-thirty of average median income that qualifies for land finance. Okay, so if you, if you look on the next page, uh, that says the, the application process, uh, there's five steps outlined for you there, uh. One of them is to identify an appropriate number of lots, a minimum number of lots that, uh, a municipality or any applicant would need to apply to the program is ten. Uh, we have found ten lots, and I will jump to that in a minute. Uh, those ten lots came from a vetting of fifteen lots. Uh, zoning board variances, um, I'll speak to those in a minute, but, uh, those again were the general site variances that would be necessary, uh, to allow building of a lot. Your role here in this, if you're so inclined, is to, uh, make an overall recommendation, uh, to proceed with the program, uh, based on its fit with the community, and then obviously, the, the, a, a larger supporting goal of this project uh, would be to solidify the, the city's position as it goes to apply for being a pro-housing certified community in the very near future. Uh, if, if both boards are so inclined to support, uh, what's presented to you, uh, we are then moving on to a city council, uh, work session and resolution, uh, where again, that this is draw support for the program in the form of a formal resolution. Within that resolution, one criteria that is critical to this program is that site control, uh, for the lots would be conveyed, uh, to LHDC with conditions, uh, for one dollar. Um, un- unlike, um, the Habitat for Humanity program that has funding to buy the lots, uh, this program, Move In New York, does not provide that because it's giving you a generous subsidy to the borrower. So the, the lots will only be conveyed under two conditions. One, that we're approved for the program. If we're not approved, well, no transfer takes place. But a second and simultaneous condition is that it will not be transferred until a, a, a qualified borrower is found. So we are not turning over ten lots en masse to the LHDC. We would be contingently holding these, assuming the council approves. And then, I'm using an example, Debbie Friend applies to the program, and we vet Debbie Friend as a qualified applicant against a seventy to a hundred and thirty average median income. LHDC then takes control of the property, then sell, then transitions it to Debbie Gable, or Debbie Friend, who then builds her home, and, uh, it's, it's a taxable property, uh, going forward. The properties are illustrated in the slide that's, uh, labeled lot selection. You'll see that there's ten of them, seven in the first ward, three in the second ward. They're all under appropriate zoning. Again, the, the, the only qualifier to these is much like with the Habitat program, you're talking about trying to activate homes on, uh, slightly blemished lots in terms of their lot size. They're not, um, as large as traditional lot sizes are. So you'll see on the page that says ready to build lots, you'll see X's near the, um, assortment of variances, um, that would be necessary, and which has been granted for the Habitat homes numerous times over. Uh, that would be, uh, necessary for this program. Um, and again, the zoning board has already, uh, in concept, uh, given their continued approval to these. Uh, but these would be the, um, the dimensions in play. These would be the variances, and again, if we're approved for the program, we then have to, uh, implement the site plans, um, so that they can be fully vetted, and each one of these lots would have a slightly different look and feel. Um, you may be asking the obvious question, why, why would we do, uh, why would we sell this, uh, to the LHDC or to this program for a dollar? Uh, very simply, these are difficult homes to, uh, market as a standalone to a market developer. So for seventy-five thousand dollars subsidies, these are the perfect fit for the program, and if you look at the financial analysis that I did for you here, um, the, working with the assessor, these properties are a total value of forty thousand four hundred dollars. If you, uh, and again, look at your small sheet, uh, that I gave you with the corrected, uh, figure on it, um, you know, based on a, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar sale price, um, a sixty percent equalization rate, working with the assessor, uh, and you apply the, the current city tax rate of eighteen thirteen, uh, that would result in a payback on these lots of less than a year and a half. And then after that, uh, but you're, again, you're, you're doing pro forma analysis, so you're making assumptions that are based on the current tax rate and current assessed values. So at eighteen thirteen, based on current assessed values, uh, you're, you're looking at taxes on a property of approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars. You do that over ten homes. That brings you to a, uh, a break even of, of, about one, one and a half years on the forty thousand four hundred. Compare that to just selling a lot outright to an individual with no home on it. If you sold all ten of those lots to individuals with no homes on it, your, your total tax value would be less than a thousand dollars. So, uh, the, 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 the home valuation is really what's driving this here, and it's a way to generate, you know, income from the city in a landlocked community. You know that we, uh, have very little open land, uh, between, uh, wetlands, open spaces, uh, nonprofits, cemeteries, what have you. Um, our ability to apply for and get approved for cer- uh, pro-housing certification really depends on participation in these types of programs. Many of these lots have been vacant for upwards of fifteen, twenty years. Um, you know, and right now they're costing the city money. They're not, they're not driving in any revenue at all. So the, the tasks at hand, if you go to the key dates and actions, um, we've had the, the zoning board process. Um, we did that in a, a little bit before you came in. Uh, if, if this board is so inclined, um, your, the task of you would be to make and vote on a recommendation, uh, to support our application to this program with all due contingencies, contingent upon approval. These things would move forward. If they don't move, if we're not approved, none of this moves forward. On December first, we're doing both a city council work session, uh, where again, the public is invited to participate, and then, uh, if so inclined, the council would act upon their resolution at the city council meeting. All of this then gets bundled together, again, assuming that, uh, everybody is in agreement. Um, all of this will be packaged together in an application, uh, that we would look to get in through the LHDC to the Move In New York program by, um, very shortly, um, after December first. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking pretty close to, uh, December fifth, sixth, seventh, somewhere in that neighborhood, uh, to get the application in, and then everything's on a rolling basis. So as you saw, the closing date is, is January of twenty twenty-six. Uh, so they're gonna move relatively quickly. We know our local competition is the City of Niagara Falls and the City of Tonawanda, uh, which all have similar needs, uh, similar, you know, similar, uh, odd lots, if you will, um, so, and that's just locally here. Uh, but this is a, you know, again, this is a statewide program. Uh, sounds like a lot of money, fifty million dollars, uh, but if you look at, you know, fifteen, um, fifteen selections over a statewide process, uh, it's, it's gonna be pretty, pretty, uh, competitive. I do not believe this covers New York City. I believe it's just everything from Albany to, to, to Buffalo. Um, so with that said, you know, the, again, the, the reason for going into this program is it's one of the infill housing actions that the, the mayor and the council have, have asked us to pursue. Uh, this is not the only uh, infill housing program that we will pursue, uh, and not everything necessarily will be a, a, a grant-funded, state-funded program. Uh, but this particular program came, uh, highly recommended to the city through the county, um, Department of Planning and Erie County Executive's Office. Again, there's no guarantee we're gonna get picked, but Lackawanna fits the profile to a T. And, and we've got everything in place, um, you know, with some small modifications in the forms of either variances or what have you, uh, but we are, are clearly, um, in the, in the mix in terms of how we would fit, and based on our history with the Habitat for Humanity-built homes, um, we, we have proven that we can execute and turn around these, these, um, these lots into productive tax generating properties, uh, very quickly. So with, with that said, that's, that's pretty much the, the presentation that I have. If you are so inclined, uh, Chair Zambrano, you're, the, the motion, after you've had your thorough conversations, uh, and open to the public and so on, if you're so inclined, um, you would be, we would be looking at a recommendation, uh, supporting our, our go-forward, uh, with this application as a fit with, uh, the city's, you know, housing plan and overall, uh, infill, infill housing focus.
Okay. So now I.
So now you open it up to the board members. First of all, you tell, open it up to the board members for any questions.
Do I have to make a motion to open?
No, no, the board members, no. No, you, if, when we go to the public piece.
Then that's the motion.
Yeah, but right now you're talking amongst yourselves. You're already in session.
Questions for anybody? I think I have a couple.
Yeah, let's start some of them.
This is Mona Abdullah, um, so the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand?
It's two-fifty.
Oh, two-fifty?
The new sheet came in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, that's just saying how much the state is putting towards that, or?
No, no, so the, the construction and land cost, based on the pilot program in Syracuse that the state ran, they can construct, they, they've proven that these homes can be constructed for a maximum of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So let's just say you were the applicant who, uh, comes into the program, Mona. You would have to qualify for the seventy-five thousand dollar subsidy by having an income between seventy and one-thirty percent of the average median income. So if you meet that criteria, that means you would also then need to qualify for a conventional mortgage of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or less. You could come in with your own money too and put, and put money down, but most folks in this program would be using the subsidy. So the, the, the program is, is, is funding the costs of the two-fifty. Uh, then ultimately, the subsidy is, is, is taken off, and the bank financing, you know, reimburses the program, uh, for, for the balance.
So the, um, so let's say the house is, the mortgage amount is only like one-fifty thousand, right? Will the individual still get, if they're qualified, will they still get the seventy-five?
Yeah, because they're, they're walking down the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand construction cost.
Okay, so, um, you'll, they'll, seventy-five thousand is no matter what price.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
And also, so if I could just, and this isn't a question you asked, but I'll, they'll fail on it, but there is a ten-year commitment with state's penalties on this. So in other words, if, if you qualify, I'm gonna continue to use you, Mona, if I can do that. So let's just say you were the person who was chosen for the, for the home. You move in, and you decide that after a year or two, don't like it, you're moving, you're selling, whatever the case may be, you would be responsible for paying back a higher portion of that seventy-five thousand dollar subsidy, and then it slides down, if you will, um, as you, as, each year, as you get to ten, ten years. So the, the, what, what they're, what they're trying to do here, other than bring in new homeownership, is to make sure that they're bringing in, uh, applicants that are also committed to staying in the community, and, and ten years is viewed as the average amount of time that someone stays in a, in a starter home, and again, that's state statistics, not necessarily
Yeah.
city statistics. Um, but there is that clause in there that requires, you, you know, and again, somebody could still walk away if they've got the money to pay it back, but, um, there's a, it's a pretty strong disincentive to, to leave.
So the, um, and then the, the mortgage that, that's borrowed from the bank, does that go through regan- is that?
Yep, that, that's a, yeah, so it's a, so if you, if you, if, and I sort of talked quickly over this, but you'll see in the deck that, um, these homes meet, you know, the federal government, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, you know, traditional lending guidelines, so they can go to, uh, a bank, they can go to a mortgage company, they can go to a Rocket Mortgage, they can go to anybody who fits the Fannie Freddie guidelines. Um, so tradi- it's traditional financing. It's not mobile or modular, high-priced financing. They, they have the ability to qualify for every uh, traditional and, uh, first-time homebuyer mortgage program. They have a little less latitude on first-time homebuyer programs because they're giving you the seventy-five subs- subsidy, so you would have to, uh, qualify for more traditional programs.
So it could still, like, the bank could still charge the interest or whatever they want?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, that, that one-seventy-five mortgage, you know, let's just say it's a traditional thirty-year. Mona, it would be at whatever prevailing, you know, rate is for a thirty-year, a fifteen-year, whatever, they qualify. Most of these folks are probably gonna have to, uh, amortize over thirty years. Um, so it would be whatever interest rate is prevailing from that bank or mortgage company for a thirty-year mortgage.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me use you as an example.
Sure.
Yeah, Debbie Friend, did you have to be owner occupied? Well, it's.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, given. It's a given. And, and so part of the process here, uh, jumping a little ahead, uh, because we're, we didn't pro- provide too much information because we're not approved for the program yet, but if we are approved for the program, another thing we're gonna utilize is, um, uh, Belmont Housing and other nonprofit housing organizations to help vet and educate people. And again, don't get confused by bringing them in because, again, traditionally, people think those are nonprofit homes.
Right.
Yes, they are nonprofit agencies who often manage nonprofit homes, but that, this is not the case here.
Okay.
They would just be brought in for the purposes of buyer education, buyer vetting, those types of things. So, but they do have to be, uh, owner occupants. They do need to go through the classes and certifications. I'd say very similar, not exact, but very similar to what the, the Habitat people go through.
And qualify for a conventional?
Absolutely, a conventional, yeah, absolutely.
And as far as selling it to the LHDC for a dollar, and if this does not get approved, then the land goes back to the city.
It, it, it's never gonna be transferred until we know two conditions have been met. One, we're in the program, and two, we have a buyer. So I'm gonna go back to my Mona example here. Obviously, if I'm talking to Mona as an applicant, uh, we've been approved for the program. Once we know that Mona passes all the criteria and qualification, and I'm skimming over the legalese, but through the process, we would transfer to LHDC, who would then close the deal with Mona, and then the construction would, would begin. So we will not, we are not transferring en masse land to the LHDC, because if for some reason the grant dries up, the we don't get ten people to apply, et cetera, et cetera, I'm talking worst-case scenarios. I don't expect any of that to happen. But worst-case scenario, we're not losing ten property assets to that. We will only move that asset when we know that those con- two conditions have been met.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Zam Brown here, um. You kind of answered the question that I have, that which sparked it. Um, do, for this program, do all ten lots have to be, I, I, I don't know what the word is spoken for, or like, you?
You, 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 well, you have to make, in your application, um, and this will be a combination of the LHDC, Erie County, and the city doing this, you have to commit to strong marketing to get those lots committed.
Okay.
Okay, so if you're coming into the program with ten lots.
Yes.
You, 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 part of the application process is a marketing plan, a high-level marketing plan, which tells the state, how, if I'm, if I'm chosen, here are the steps that I'm going to take to market these ten lots. In the ideal scenario, we have more than ten people who want these lots.
Right.
Okay, you hope you have more than ten people that want them. That's where we're gonna use Belmont's lottery system to select, because there is no weighted vote here. Just because somebody is a renter in Lackawanna or a renter in South Buffalo or what have you, you gotta be in it to win it, and everybody's equal weight.
Okay.
Okay, but we will certainly put more marketing emphasis in our local community.
Yeah.
Uh, in the hopes that we get more of our existing residents and existing tenants aware. But again, you gotta be in it, in it to win it, and, you know, if, let's just say we have fifty people, we're gonna vet through the Belmont Lottery, and how that lands is how that lands.
So if you don't get ten applicants, and we, we don't find good, ten good applicants, and then does this just, then we lose?
They, um, yeah, well, they won't, they won't, they won't take. Yeah, they, they won't take back. Well, you have to commit, and so let's assume the best-case scenario. You have ten people. You have to commit to having these homes constructed up and funded within five months of a grant.
That was.
Okay, so worst-case scenario, though, flip the opposite side, let's just say, you know, it's a dud, and, you know, only six of the ten lots are spoken for.
Yes.
They're not gonna pull the lots back from the people who have been chosen. You're just, you're just done. They'll just, they'll just stop you.
So they'll do the six, and then?
Yeah, because these are, uh, and, well, they could, they could, they could, let me rephrase. They could allow you to do them staggered, or they could require you to do them all at once.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's a timeline, like?
They'll, they'll let us know. That'll be part of the approval process, and that is a could be A, could be A, could be B. Okay, but, but in theory, the way it's been described to us, is if they allow us to move forward
Yeah.
and vet these on a, you know, I think it's unrealistic to expect that you're gonna sell all ten home, to, all ten lots at the same time. They gotta give you some window to sell these things, right? So, uh, but they'll put that criteria up on it. The expectation is, Katrina, based on, uh, Erie County's data, uh, and the LHDC's pipeline, uh, we probably should not have any issue getting ten people.
Okay. And then, um, these lots that you have targeted and, you know, have, have they been on the market on their own? Like, wh- how did you come to this?
These, these, these have been city-owned properties available on the city-owned, what is that list called? That gave, what is that list? The city-owned property list? Yeah, I think it's called city-owned property, available city-owned property. These things have been on the city website for years.
Okay.
Have they been actively, like, somebody go run an ad for them? No, not necessarily. But every year, the assessor's office, going back decades, is required to provide the council with a list of available, uh, lots for sale or development.
Right.
And, and from those lists, in my short time with the city, we've had people come in and off, uh, ask to buy them, uh, some for expanding their property, some to build a home. Not all of them have been accepted. You know, some have wanted to buy the property just to simply hold it, and the council and the mayor would prefer that we have uh, an active home there, because if you look at the, 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 the math that I put in the presentation here, if you're sold a lot, you know, you're getting hundreds of dollars. If you put a lot with a home on it, you're getting thousands of dollars, and over years, you're continuing, uh, a, a revenue strength. It, it's not minimizing or trivializing. Somebody wants to buy a lot to expand their property, but in a community where we have so little available land to build homes.
Right.
Um, the preference is, wherever we can, is to leverage these types of programs to infill open spaces.
Yes.
And, and it's, and it's especially prevalent in the low-to-mod communities of the first and second ward, where a lot of these grant funds tend to tailor, not necessarily the geography, but the, the profile of low to moderate income. And in this particular case, they And in this particular case, they put in a much, the state has put in a much more generous low to mod definition. Low to mod usually isn't a hundred and thirty percent of of average median income. Okay, so they've 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 stretched it a little, in the hope that you're bringing in. You know, folks with um a commitment to wanting to build and grow in that community and stay there long term.
That was my two questions.
So so now, once the if the board is satisfied with their questions, now you make your motion to open it up to anybody who may have. Uh comments uh from the public floor or comment, and you have three minute.
Ladies are good. Okay, motion to open it to public comment?
Round motion.
Second Abdullah.
All in favor? Okay, motion carried.
So is there anybody here in the gallery uh to speak for or against this product?
Against, I'm against it.
Come up, come on up.
Please state state your name and address for the record.
I'd rather not. Um so basically, what I what I what I see is uh. I wanna ask you a question, is that you said that L H, L L H D C is being sold to for a dollar, right?
The the land would be transferred for a dollar for the purposes of building the home.
Okay, so why is it a problem to sell the land to the people of Lackawanna? Instead of selling it to the L H D C for profit? People that have been living here.
There's no profit being made by the L H D C. The land is just being transferred symbolically for a dollar, nobody's making any profit on this. The taxes will ultimately be the profit that the city makes on it, and that's being made whether or not it's sold through a grant program or to an individual program. We. There really is no difference, sir, between selling it to any individual and putting it as part of this program. We've identified these lots because they fit a program that's going to bring the city s- uh. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant money to allow people to buy these homes. And usually, that is the challenge that we face when individuals try to do this. Is they 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 have the best of intentions to buy the lot and build a home, and then they don't qualify.
But you said that people that tried to buy these properties, they were denied.
Uh the well, like, because they they were not buying them for the purposes of building homes, people wanted to put. Uh parking lots there, they wanted to uh park their own cars there, they wanted them as additional storage. And and again, there's nothing wrong with wanting to add to your yard. But when you look at what's best for the city, a home generating twenty eight hundred dollars a year in city taxes is far better. Than an incremental couple hundred dollars by somebody expanding their lot. No disrespect to the person that's expanding their lot, the city needs revenue.
So it's so it's about the city, it's not about providing affordable homes.
Oh, no, it's absolutely about a po- prior providing affordable homes. We are providing ten affordable homes that don't exist today.
That we don't need, it it that we we don't need.
Based based on what criteria do you say we don't need them?
Um based off that, we pretty much, the city is pretty much doing well, you can tell. Our city, our city isn't doing bad. Our city isn't doing bad.
No, I I I know, I'm 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 sitting in the middle of it, so I I understand that. But what I what I what I want you to also understand is that this program is is not just singularly focused. And again, I appreciate your point, so I'm not arguing with it, okay? So what I'm what, the next step beyond this that I'd like you to understand is that. This program is a part of a bigger approach that the city's trying to take to become something called Pro Housing Certified. It's something that's a state designates to municipalities, and it's a requirement for them to apply. For larger economic development grants that would allow us to, you know. Get more, get more revenue either by improving mainstream Ridge Road, improving the central business district along South Park. Improving the 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 west end of Ridge Road, you know, in the first ward. Today, we can't qualify for those programs because we're not Pro Housing Certified. So by bringing in ten affordable homes as one of a a bigger project. That helps our other application to become Pro Housing Certified, then we can get into the mix for the larger dollars.
Right, so so basically, this whole thing is about getting more revenue.
It's about generating revenue for the city, yes, sir.
To 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 provide, what else besides, you know, doing roads and build and uh bridges? What about the children? What do we have, what do we have going on for the children?
Don't don't disagree with you at all, and it's it's a tremendous point. Nope, I I understand, the more and 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 a lot of that is because the city has had a challenge with revenue. So the more revenue we can bring in, one of the things it's definitely gonna do, the more revenue we bring in. It it prevents ridiculous tax increases down the road. Doesn't eliminate them all, but it mu- will help minimize tax increases. It will also provide more revenue for things like recreation. It doesn't all have to be roads, there are kids around here, and 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 you bring up a good point. Because these types of programs bring in families with young kids. And so if you can prove that.
Families, bro.
I I realize we do.
But my my thing is, the the my whole point is this. Then people that live in the city, been in the city, living in those, some of those houses that's connected to those lots. That wanna buy those lots to increase their life. You're talking about bringing somebody else in. I've been maintaining my lot, my family's been maintaining this lot for over fifteen years. The Department of Works do not come to cut the grass, they do not maintain this lot, haven't done it for twenty years. I have the proof, okay? So for you to tell me that all of a sudden, just because of a grant, that you wanna move people in, oh, that sound good. But we've been taking care of that lot for over fifteen years, and you won't sell me the lot? That's next to my home, I've been a resident of Lackawanna for forty years. My family has been here for over a hundred years. So what about the people that's been here? I understand that you're trying to do whatever you're gonna do, but that sound good. It does, I'm I'm telling you, it does, it sounds good, but I guarantee you, we won't have a Y M C A nowhere in Lackawanna. We won't have a public pool nowhere in Lackawanna, these kids don't have nothing to do when it's snowing great. And y'all all know that. That's why the crime rate will go up. Okay, so bringing people in to something that they, what are they, they come in here for what? For revenue? To go in somebody else's pocket, and no disrespect to nobody in here, and I'm not saying that you guys are doing it. But I'm telling you, this has been the thing in this in this city for years.
I understand, uh if I may stop you here, because this board is is only here. To provide a general recommendation, your arguments are a valid one. There is the opportunity to speak further on this before the city council at the work session on the first, so.
Yeah, I wanna hold you, I wanna hold you guys tight, I just wanna get my, I just wanna get my point.
And I didn't want you to blow all your powder on this board, because they can only do so much. So what you're saying there, ha- you have a lot of valid points that are very passionately delivered. The city council is the body of government that ultimately decides whether we can sell these lots or not. And so that work session on December first and five thirty in this building, this room, is the perfect opportunity for you to say that. To that board, which would have a little bit more impact than what these folks are charged with doing.
Right, no, I'm not.
No, and I'm not.
I'm just getting my point. I just want y'all to understand. I received a letter, and I already came down here trying to buy this lot, and telling me that they selling it.
When the uh so, not that I meant, when did you, when did you try to do this?
Two years ago, I tried to buy it, had got the money for it, tried to buy it. Told me I had to uh put a bid in, never heard from the city again. And now I'm hearing that you guys are selling it, and it's like, for what? When it's, and now I understand, it's because of revenue. Because if you sell it to me as a homestead, you don't get as much money as you would for variance. But who's to say that I can't put one there? Who's to say that I can't do that?
No, nobody, nobody's saying that.
Right, so why does it has to be done through the L H D C? Why can't the residents get a chance to do something with the city?
Be- because.
The city's full of it, man. It's not doing, the city's not doing bad.
I'm I'm not saying it is, but this this program brings us wider benefit, um we've gone way over.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good, man.
I just wanted to get my point across, I said, guys have a good one.
And I don't want to, I don't wanna think that we're cutting you off, December first, five thirty, if you're.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um he asked if I could translate.
What's that?
He asked if I could translate.
Sure.
Wait, Baytak? Okay, he said he lives on. Thirty seven Caldwell? Okay, next to one of the property. Wait, my gizet minute, the property, deep in whatever. He said he has a portion of the land that's. And he doesn't want the city to mess with that.
Every once in a while, one of his time to choose it for parking, and then get tickets.
So do you own the land that you're talking about? Can you ask him that?
Okay, he said this portion, this portion. He said this portion is um part of his land.
This is my house, and this is my area.
Yeah, so this is your house and this is your lot, the lot's gonna be over here, I believe, right? Because this is Caldwell place here, so this is your property here, the property they're talking about is over here.
Building here, that's thirty three.
Think they're building here, because this is Caldwell right here, right? Yeah, it's on the corner, yeah.
Yeah, this from thirty three, I see three of these, because I have some.
Are you sure this is thirty three? Because thirty three's on the corner, if you're looking down Caldwell, it's to the left, you know what I mean? Yes, and he's talking thirty seven, which is the property to the right, correct?
That has a house.
Yes, so I'm just gonna show it to Scott over.
Yeah, that's thirty seven altogether, yeah, so it's this one right here.
So this property we're talking about is not.
Yeah, so we're talking about the property on the other side of where it would be built.
Thirty three's by the corner, thirty three's on the corner. Wait, let me say it again. I don't know, he's saying, he's saying it's still part of his property.
I mean, according to certainly, it looks like this property line is straight up and down, let me call it up on.
He said that portion is part of thirty three.
You never.
This is difficult, that we don't know what's being said.
Yeah, so.
So he's disputing the lines of the property?
He's disput, it sounds like he's disputing the property lines.
Okay, just so I have an understanding of what we're talking about here.
So, this is the property we're talking about, right here, thirty three center, your property is right here. I believe, right, Caldwell? Yeah, so is that your property right there, uh Alin? Yeah, yeah, so that's, it's not your property, the property they're talking about is right here. It's on the corner of Center Caldwell, you don't own any of that property, you're talking about something back up in here that you own. Yeah, that's the property the city's talking about right there.
Wait, you have, I don't know, I, he said he has property, into my gizet man had it.
Your property line, alright, so if I click on that, see the green, that's your property line. It's, it doesn't encroach on the property the city's.
This thirty three, okay, or no?
You're looking at this property on the other side, if you're talking about that little area there, but it doesn't look like that's your property line anyway.
Yeah, this is the thirty three.
It's not thirty three, thirty three, that's on the other side, thirty three is over here on this side. It's this property right here. I know, but this is yours, see this green line here, that's the property the city's talking about for the house. The green outline, not, your property is here. It even shows your name right there, that's your property, the green line is your property.
Okay, I was just looking on the list here.
Are we, are we clear? So can we, can we uh please move, there there there's no encroachment on this property?
Okay, so there's no encroachment on your property, sir.
Okay, he said, how could he know, because he's um, he doesn't live on that land.
He wants to bring up a survey or something, we'll go over there and double check.
You want him to come to your office or?
Sure, come to. Thank you, okay, so.
Any other questions from public? Okay, motion, uh motion to close, comment second?
April second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Now you move to whatever resolution, or that resolution moved to whatever recommendation you so choose. The requested recommendation is support for the applications to move in New York.
Want to read it? Alright, so we're voting. To talk about a vote on the recommendation of supporting the application for this um. Move in plan.
I make a motion.
Second.
April second.
Alright, all in favor? I, opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
I'm sorry, you guys are posting it at seven to five instead of six.
Don't worry, the board's worn down by now.
So uh next thing on the agenda, site plan approval for John T. Hook Junior, nine ten Ridge Road. Usher's flower shop. Waisner Flower Shop.
So before he starts talking, just just to remind you of of what we've done in the past, so you do recall that the Waisners uh. Consolidated their operation from the store that was next to Mr. Cook uh into the Christmas shop building that has been fully completed. Uh Stone Art now owns the former Waisner Flower Shop building. Ultimately, the granted plan was structured with you right here is uh how that building is gonna be part of. Uh an expanded stone out there.
Basically, we don't, we're gonna use it kinda for what she had, storage um in the whole back section. We wanna put some garage spaces and we're gonna use the existing building. Gonna take it down when we first started and then we looked at it and it's like we kinda built the same thing back um. The big item, we wanna kinda do something to enhance Ridge Road uh. The front of place is in pretty rough shape. So, in Bamo, the nursery park, these are all stamped and all these are all. I think we got a little bit carried away on. Actually, this is our existence, this is Stone Art, we'll go by here. Shows the existing. Yeah, okay, so this is showing the existing front of Pat Waisner's building, okay? We would like to take that off and set that building, this this is here, okay, this is us, we wanna pull a little cut through. This would be warehouse space back here, which is there. This part's where she had like her her baskets and stuff. We wanna open this up and put a couple garage doors. Not changing the outside, I mean, we are gonna re-site this thing when we're done. Uh, pretty much utilize what she's got, but the front of it, kinda wanna give. Ridge Road kinda just up a little bit, so. This, this is what we have, this is us, this is kinda the take that we'd like to do and kinda match it to our building. Set it back a little bit, cause we've always had a problem. It's like people, we're stone art, I mean, our signs hanging out.
Right.
We kinda like to kinda more kinda highlight stone art, have that set back, but the architecture and everything would be very similar. It just needs a real good. I guess what I'm here for tonight, uh we've had uh Scott's got all the asbestos reports, we've had all the environment, all that stuff done. We, I guess what we need to find out is if we can.
Site, site plan approval for the.
And I'll be happy to leave a son of these with them folks, if you deem them, you probably should have us that anyway.
Tom, I see this is Chuck's Arkham Development, is it intent still to bring? That woodlawn facility, is this still part of that whole process?
Yeah, I mean, you've been kind in this in the beginning, Chuck, so you know, like, we kinda have to do that before we can clean that out.
I just wanna make sure that those the.
We do have a facility right at Lake Road on Route five, we just, this will replace that. Everything will be in one spot.
It's gonna be central.
That was the whole intent to to consolidate and strengthen Waisner and consolidate and strengthen Stone Art so the two. You know, long time, decades long businesses are still operating and staying.
And there won't be a portion of this uh, I think this is gonna have monuments in it, right Mike? We're gonna, we're gonna have like an extra holder, like a showroom, but not really a showroom. It's kind of an overload for families, they can go with.
It's just a little kickoff storage garage for us to put granite under.
Plus, we've run a parking from her.
This will improve your parking.
Yeah, that parking.
We put land, we do have a landscaping proposal plus light poles to go in front of the building, granite light poles, of course. Um, to spruce everything up and make it look.
We just wanna get it looking nicer, I mean, you know, you're driving up here today, you know, that corner where the mobile was, I mean, that's all fixed up nice. There are one spot that looks like hell, and I gotta be honest, it's that building over there, it's not been touched off. If if there's some problems, then we wanna get it fixed. The right way, the basement actually runs out under the sidewalk there.
Yeah, so it's.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't know if they used to have an old elevator access.
Everything's here, though, there's not gonna be any manufacturing, we're gonna keep all that at nine fourteen. Only equipment would be a a bridge crane in the back section, like just like we got in the showroom, if any of you guys have ever been in. That's all we're asking. Been a long deal, I gotta tell you, this has been going on.
How soon do you think you'll start?
Chuck helped us a lot. Right next door.
The asbestos survey will be issued tomorrow with approval.
I was assuming something like this would happen after.
I was being, in fact, I drove by there the other day.
These guys at the the Waisner and the and Stone Art have been talking about this for a while. Consolidated and become more efficient, they wanted to grow and bring their operation all central to Lakewanna. The sites, you know, it all, it all came together at the same time. So, did you have anything uh pro or against, or you just here to observe?
Uh, one stamp, one regular.
Yeah, we have one stamp, do you have an extra regular one? Okay, we're gonna bring one with us. So for the purposes of the rest, between us, just say um. There's no one in attendance to speak uh on behalf of the project and then just move on to your under.
So there's no one in the audience here?
I'm gonna tell you folks, I I mean, we're gonna start on this back section.
Excuse me, folks, we're over talking, abort processor, so please let them do their vote and then you guys can do your talking.
Right, so we're.
We're gonna start this right away. He told me, don't order garage doors or anything, the front's gonna be a little bit down the road. There's a lot of engineering involved, try to figure that out. You guys can take it from here? A lot of smell.
They're gonna, they're gonna vote right now.
Alright, so motion to uh. Motion, motion to approve, site plan, site round motion, site plan.
Um, I second Mona Abdullah.
Second, alright, all in favor? Oppose? Audience member in favor as well, okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Sounds like a plan. On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good job.